Secretary, we call the tonight's meeting to order. Okay, to the manager.
My name is Council. We have two items on the workshop schedule for tonight. The first one on recycling and the second on our legislative agenda. It's likely we will only do the first one before going into regular and then we'll come back and do the legislative session after the regular hearings.
Whenever we get to it.
Whenever we get to it.
Say no.
Yeah.
You'll enjoy the recital.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Keith.
All right, to the manager. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm going to try to be brief. You actually have an agenda item on your agenda this evening out in the other room to award a contract. So I just want to give you kind of a snapshot of what it is and why we're here. So our current contract for processing of recyclable materials expired on November 1st. We are currently doing processing under interim agreement on a month-to-month basis. And then out there in the other room, there's an item to approve a three-year recyclable processing contract with FCC. And they are located, they have offices in their processing facility in Dallas. And Austin Ellis is here tonight with FCC to answer any questions that y'all may have. And I want to stress that this will have no impact on the services our residents receive for their trash and recycling. Actually, our recyclable materials will still be collected curbside the same day as the regular waste collection by the same vendor. Currently, we have waste management, and as you know, that may change in the next month or so to Republic, but they will still do that same collection. The recycling materials will not be impacted in the collection by this change. Multifamily materials are collected on Tuesdays in the larger dumpsters. We've talked about that before. So the hauling vendor collects the material, hauls it to a material recovery facility. We refer to that as a MRF, to be sorted, cleaned, and processed into their respective commodities. The MRF then sells those commodities with a price based on a demand in the market and then the quality of those materials. And those materials are bought and sold just like raw materials are. For the last three years, recyclable materials have been processed by Pratt Industries in Denton, and Pratt chose not to renew the contract. And again, it did expire in just in November 1st. So we went through a proposal for this. We did hire a consulting firm, Burns &amp; McDonald, to assist us with that procurement process. That request for proposals went out in June, was out for a little over a month. We had a holiday in there, and obviously, we extend through that holiday. Then we had an evaluation committee, folks from public services, environmental control services, sustainability, budgeted purchasing, all got together, reviewed the proposals that we did receive, which we received too. We did have some other vendors that indicated an interest but did not submit proposals. So that committee went through. They were evaluated based on 125 possible points, a letter of intent that was a prerequisite, no points, their proposed approach, the experience, the financial stability of the company, the financial proposal, how would it impact the city financially? And then we did conduct interviews and tours of both of those vendors as well. The committee reviewed that, and then our outside consultant evaluated the financial proposal on our behalf. So essentially, that financial proposal was how much money would the city get, or how much might it cost the city to do this processing? The net revenue is the recyclable revenue that they recover from the products that are sold minus the processing fee, you know, how much does it cost them to process clean and prepare those commodities for the market? And then they gave us a percentage of that difference. So our revenue is based on how much do they make, how much does it cost them to make it, and then a percentage of that was what we received from the two vendors. The two vendors, FCC here tonight, Waste Management was the second vendor. What we have here are total incoming tons. We process about 5,400 tons of recyclable material every year. We do include glass right now in that, and glass is about 16% of that by weight. Residue, which is basically trash that's mixed in with recycling, has 18% of that makeup. Disposal fee, in the contract, there is a fee. If our residue exceeds that 18%, we have to pay a fee to dispose of it. That's where you start to see differences in the two pricings that came from the vendors. Our average value per ton, that is based on an assessment of our actual waste stream times the value in a commodity index. And so that number is the same for both vendors. But then they both gave us a processing fee per ton. FCC with glass, 8145, 7145 without, and then waste was 9250 and 9025. Revenue share, 60% from FCC, 70% from waste. The analysis throughout all of these different numbers boils down to, we expect to make a revenue of about $7,000 a year if we include glass in the FCC contract. We have a potential for considerably more, $53,000, if we were to exclude glass. If we went with the Waste Management, it would be $42,000 cost to the city if we included glass, $12,000 if we did not. So I want to talk a little bit about the glass and the recycling stream. We are recommending that we maintain glass as a recyclable commodity in the program. A number of reasons that go into that. One of the big ones is the education, the outreach, and the permanent behavioral changes that would have to be made for people to stop putting glass in the recycling bin. We don't think we can be successful on that. If you go back and you look at the percentages, if we exceed a certain percentage, then we start paying for disposal of that. So while those numbers reflect that, we could make more money if we eliminated glass. We believe we would have to end up paying a lot more of the disposal charge for that glass rather than recycling it. Residents often get discouraged if we make changes to what can be recycled. I don't know about y'all, but I don't even really look at my recycle list. I just know what's recyclable, right? To me, glasses has always been and will always be recyclable items. It can be very hard to convince people to stop doing that. However, should we decide somewhere down the road that we do want to eliminate glass, we did include a sliding scale for processing fee. So if we do reduce that glass percentage over time, we can pay a sliding, smaller processing fee as that is eliminated. So we did want to maintain the ability in that contract to get rid of the glass, but the recommendation from day one is that we not make any change to this to glass. So the contract that's before you this evening, FCC was awarded the most points by the selection committee. They did provide the financial proposal that's most advantageous to the city. We are recommending the award to FCC. The contract provides for that processing of those recyclable materials for a term of three years with the option to renew for two additional three-year terms. There is the potential that we'll make revenue from the contract. However, it's so dependent on the value of those commodities that should they go down or should our waste stream become more contaminated, we may need to pay for that recycling processing. FCC has been willing to put a cap on what that fee could be, and they've capped it in the contract to what their disposal charge would be at their landfill there in Dallas. And so what that would do would be if the bottom falls out on the market and we decide we want to continue sending these materials to be processed, they will continue processing them, and they will only charge us for the cost of disposal of those materials. So that is written into the contract. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any. Mr. Ellis is here from FCC. If you have any questions for him, he'd probably be happy to answer some.
Just one quick. You're talking about the cost with the residue. I guess that would be different material with food or some kind of contamination. Is there any way, anything that we're going to do to try to educate our citizens, like, hey, you got to clean this out, you know, because we're not going to eliminate glass right now, but at least get them to start.
So residue contamination is things like wishful recycling, you know? When we were here before, I think we might have picked this up and said, hey, this is plastic, I can put it in the recycle bin, right? Answer is no, this is not a recyclable product. So we get wishful recycling. We also get, as you pointed out, dirty items, pizza boxes, right? The cardboard is recyclable. Once it's contaminated with food, it's no longer recyclable. Plastic bags is another thing that is not recyclable. Really, it is, but it's not in the format that they process these things, where it just dumps on the floor and goes into the machine. And actually, when we visited their site, they actually have a very new, very state-of-the-art processing facility where various places in the facility, they have these big suction things that you can actually, those workers there can pull those plastic grocery bags and whatnot and put them into the vacuum system, and it will actually pull all those and pull them in one place so that they can be recyclable. But if they're missed, they end up causing real problems with the gears and the separating devices. So a lot of that contamination is wishful products and then dirty contaminated products.
I didn't know until recently that the cap on a plastic water bottle is not recyclable. I always put it back on the bottle very carefully.
So it's made of a different type of plastic? So it's not necessarily that it's not recyclable, it's just that, well, two things. One, it's so small that if it did get into there by itself, it would never make it through the process, and then it's a different type of materials. So this item's on the agenda tonight? Thank you.
So question, or Council, one thing to add is if this contract starts costing us money, we are not budgeted for that cost. So I will have to, we'll be monitoring this as we put this in place, and I'll be coming back to you at mid-year if we start seeing a cost, and we may have to do some type of budget allocation. We have always made money on recycling, but the market has changed, so we may not see much.
Okay, now we're ready to go down to seat. Through the agenda. First item, we do have a quote on present, I didn't say that earlier. First item in regular session tonight is the invocation by Councilman Ferguson, followed by a pledge to the American Texas flag by Councilman Gilmore. And we got public hearing, item one. Anybody have any questions on item one? Down to item two. Anything on that? Item three.
And this is just typical of, because we're in a big city in the area, and Texas doesn't want to be out here.
Because we're over 50,000.
Yeah, so we get.
So we have responsibility, if we choose to accept it, for those smaller cities. And we've done this historically for a number of years.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Item four? Item five? Item six?
I do have one comment on this. I would like to, I would like it very much if we ensure that we have local products sold, this have them available. So Old Town Brew House, Witherspoon Distillery, and wherever we want our products. Since this is, I think it's important, I think it's important that we support our local products.
Don't disagree with that, but that may determine whatever caterer we use, that may limit us on what caterers.
I don't think restricted to that, but I would say just include local.
That we had to do a request of that local caterer. Is that just the alcoholic beverages?
Yeah, well, yeah. What else is, that's. With this fall under our catering agreement that we have for like the NCL, I don't know if that's just a building specific or if that's city.
I talked to Carolyn, and she is going to utilize one of the caters. It's on our approved list. So that's for sure. I don't think she's selected.
Oh, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's like brands, they sneak up on you. Yeah, they're quiet.
We are working with a vendor that is, we feel brand uses on a regular basis. The staff, we're going to open lines of communication this week, but since it, you know, wasn't decided, we haven't made any decisions yet.
Regardless, it sounds like a fun program. I think it's a really creative use of the space.
I agree. I think this is unique. The library's never done something like this, and I'm expecting turnout to be really good.
I already have people.
Calling you back?
Yeah.
Are they? Okay, good. Good.
Okay, item seven?
So Council, as you know, we've received a number of complaints about Midway Road, and so this is a rehabilitation project. And one thing that staff has decided to do, because the road has gotten in such bad repair, mainly because of those, there's two major construction projects taking place at the same time along Midway Road, and then you combine that with rain, and you've had potholes and significant problems. So Keith is going to go in and do a grind overlay on this so that then when they come in to do the reconstruction project, they're going to start with a better base to make travel better during that process. It's still going to be a very difficult project. It's going to take it from an asphalt to a concrete project, so it's going to be a major enhancement, but there is going to be some pain in getting through that. David, did you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I would add is, of course, the overlays could help as well because the contractor probably started this project after the first three years, so it's going to be a little bit of time lapse between obviously the city and what they start.
Okay. Anything else? I'm late.
So this is also a project that's been a long time coming. So, you know, we got the grant a number of years ago, I'll just leave you with that. Put it on hold as we proceeded with Valley Ridge. Valley Ridge took longer than expected. Then we went out on bid, and as you remember, the bids came in way over the dollar amount we had budgeted. So we redid our specs, went back out, and it still came in high, but about $2 million less than the original.
Well, actually, it was a half million less. The first bid was $9 million.
Okay, so it was $10 million. And so we are having to move money from some other street projects to make this happen, basically from northwest Old Town and the Civic Central Valley Parkway project. So we'll be looking at backfilling those projects later as we look at our overall CIP projects. But this has been a long time coming. It's a great project for Old Town, where we'll be going in and doing on-street parking lanes, bicycle lanes, water sidewalks, landscaping. We'll generate about 69 additional spaces on Main and 28 additional spaces on Main Street.
Okay, item nine? Now we'll go through the hearing, item 10. Item 11?
Mayor, I understand that the applicant has contacted City Secretary's office and asked that this be delayed until the 19th meeting, November 19th.
Only retain from this.
Okay. Item 13?
Julie, I believe you got a phone call.
Fortunately, on Friday, we weren't able to make contact personally with the chamber, but I have since talked to them today. They are not going to charge for this event, and any monies they've collected will be refunded, so this item won't need to have any action taken on it.
So this goes away?
It goes away, yes.
Okay. Do we need to take any action on it?
I'll read the caption and just let you know that no action is to be taken.
If I read the paperwork and find out. And that's the regular agenda, and we will have one item for closed session. Okay. We got about five minutes we can go through.
I don't think we can get to the issue.
Okay. We'll reconvene at 7 o'clock out front.
Drive.
It's 7 o'clock. We'll call tonight's meeting the Louisville City Council to order. First item of business is the invocation given by Councilman Ferguson, followed by the pledge to the American Texas flag by Councilman Gilmore. I didn't see you, you weren't there, I'm sorry.
I need to say something.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Shortest chair ever. Am I making it short?
To the secretary?
Are you sure?
Public hearing number one, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for an auto repair shop on 9.632 acres located at 1900 Lakeway Drive. The request is for Pro-Tech Automotive Solutions to locate its corporate office, dispatch center, vehicle repair shop, and training center in a 24,800-square-foot leased space within Waters Ridge Business Park. PNC recommended approval by a vote of 7 to 0. The city council, the recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have Richard Ludke, planning director, available to address any questions. We also have a Robert M. Hill available to address any questions, and a Brett Florrie would like to speak before the city council.
Okay. Go ahead and call that one out. Yes, could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Brett Florrie, Cross Architects, 1255 West 15th Street, Plano, Texas.
Go ahead.
My name's Brett Florrie. I'm here with the architect on this project, and just here mainly to answer any questions that you may have. But I can tell you that Pro-Tech is a growing company. This will be their headquarters, new corporate headquarters, and they're pretty much the industry leader in the advanced warning driver system kind of work that they do on cars.
Okay. Do you have any questions with this? Okay, thanks, sir.
Second to close.
Is there anything else, Julie, or is that it? Okay. Did you have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion, the seconds are in discussion. Please vote. Do you have a motion?
We have to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Please cast your vote. Just a second. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay. To the attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for an auto repair shop on approximately 9.632 acres, legally described as Lot 2R3, Block A, Waters Ridge Edition Phase 2, located at 1900 Lakeway Drive, and Zone Light Industrial, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor, we have no cards.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
That was just Visitor Citizen Forum.
Do you have a motion, so cast your vote.
I'm just doing what the mayor told me.
Way ahead, we're 10 steps ahead.
Do what? Break us in the general. I thought we're doing this, aren't we?
Now we are. She was just write this Visitor Citizen's forum.
When do we start doing that?
The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. All of the items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. To the secretary?
Agenda item 10, consideration of a variance to Section 6-103 regarding driveway spacing for the property located near the southeast corner of State Highway 121 Business and South Valley Ridge Boulevard. The developer is proposing to construct two office buildings with one driveway with a deceleration lane along State Highway 121 Business, thereby necessitating a variance to allow driveway spacing between adjacent lots to be less than 230 feet apart. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. We have city engineer David Solomon available to address any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11?
Agenda item 11, consideration of a variance to Section 11-10 GC27 to allow a freestanding sign to exceed the maximum height of 60 feet in the I-35E corridor located at 252, sorry, 2512 South Stemmons Freeway. The property owner at home is requesting a variance for a 75-feet freestanding sign in the I-35E corridor. The recommendation is that the council deny the variance as set forth in the caption.
Okay, we do.
This is an item that we've had a request from the requester to continue to the November 19th meeting.
Okay. We do have a request for continuance till the 19th of November. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Yes, so moved. Second.
Cast your vote. Motion passes. Thank you.
Agenda item 12. Consideration of a contract award for recyclable materials processing services to FCC SA Inc., Dallas, Texas, and authorization for the city manager to execute the contract. FCC SA Inc. is being recommended for award based on receiving the highest evaluation score. The term of the contract will be for three years with options to extend for up to two additional three-year periods. The recommendation is that the city council approve the award and authorize the city manager to execute the contract as set forth in the caption.
Mayor, I have to abstain from this one.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Cast your vote.
Item 13. Consideration of approval for the Louisville Chamber of Commerce to charge for their focus on state government event, which will be held on November 8th, 2018, on the third floor of City Hall. Council, there's no action required on this item?
Okay. So we go to the next item. Reports?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
Got a streak going, I gotta have, the lake is up, I'm pretty sure.
Mayor, the lake is up. It's up about six feet above the conservation pool. Also want to mention that several city employees are participating in the No Shave November as a way to raise awareness and funds for those cancers that typically most affect men.
Okay, thank you.
That's why it's supposed to be. And I shave.
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to report on our first Louisville Community Resource Expo this weekend, which was a success. We served approximately, were estimated about 120 individuals at the event. Forty people had their haircuts for free by LISD cosmetology students. But what was most impressive, I think, from our standpoint was that we were primarily serving the Hispanic population, people who needed translation that normally are not coming into City Hall, and also people of the Chin population as well. It was really exciting to see everyone else out there. The other part of this was getting all of the nonprofits to get to know one another in the same room and working together, so that there's a lot less duplication of services in our community. So we think it's a success and we're looking forward to planning the next one next year.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Yes, Mayor. I'm kind of excited about the new monitors up here. I feel like Captain Kirk with all this stuff up here.
Who's that?
All the technology. So, but hey, the important part is, is this Saturday, eight o'clock, I'll say it and I'll say it again, is the most fun you'll ever have picking up trash. Keep Louisville Beautiful, it's the Trinity Trash Bash, picking up trash in the waterways. And this is especially important. Luckily, and maybe not so lucky, with a lot of the rain, a lot of the water has washed some of the trash downstream, but it's also washed some of it into us too. So we will be picking up, we're starting at eight o'clock at Lake Park. So now that is the place that we plan on having it. It could potentially move if Wednesday and Thursday have a lot more rain than we expect, but if not, we should be picking up eight o'clock on Thursday. It's a lot of fun. You'll pick up trash, you'll meet a lot of people. There's an expo out there with lots of different organizations that you get to meet them. They have prizes, they'll feed you breakfast and get you coffee, or there's muffins and coffee and everything, so it's a great day. Show up eight o'clock and dress warm, because it's always cold.
Is it late off the lake? Saturday?
Saturday, eight o'clock.
Good.
I just want to remind everybody today is Elections Eve, so we'll be through with commercials for a little while, but we want to tell everybody to go out and exercise their right to vote. You have to go to your polling places, go to votedenton.com to find out where you go to vote tomorrow.
Because there's a lot of them in Louisville, so yeah, don't get used to going to Civic Center.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I wanted to thank city staff. We have a great collaboration coming up this Thursday, and I love the camera because I'm like so short today. This Thursday from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., our fire department and our library are presenting Libros on Location. It is a bilingual storytime at our brand-new Fire Station 3, which is down on 3040. You can find out more information by going to the latest city news and just look for the Libros on Location Louisville Public Library item. And that's all I have.
Thank you. See the manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Judge?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several things coming up at the MCL Grand. First of all, Peter Pan, new musical, four performances November 9th through the 11th. That's presented by Christian Youth Theater. Encore, presented by Louisville Lake Symphony, is November 16th. Black Box Songwriter Series, Tom Faulkner, who's well-known to many and very popular along with Beth Wood, who's extremely talented, both together on November 18th, and that's in the Black Box. Majestic Ballet will do two performances of The Nutcracker on November 24th. And of course, always on Friday nights, Acoustic Jam from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., presented by the Visual Arts League. Got several public activities. Teen Art Workshop, November 12th, that's presented by the city of Louisville. Garden Secrets Class, presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful. The topic this time is foodscaping, and that's on November 15th. North Texas Quinceanera Fashion Show, presented by Anna's of Louisville, on November 18th. And then in the art gallery, we have Merging Visions. This is an unusual show. It's a collaborative exhibit of art and poetry, and it runs through November 24th, and that's presented jointly by Denton Poets Assembly and the Visual Arts Society of Texas. And then on the north gallery, artworks by an artist whose name I think you'll recognize, Becky Kerbo. So lots to see and do at the MCL Grand. Go enjoy it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Bob?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor? Nothing? Officer, thanks for your service to the community, it's greatly appreciated. Julie, he'll read the closed session caption.
We'll go back to regular. We're going to complete the first legislative workshop, and then we'll go to closed down for that.
Can we do that back there? Okay. Okay, now we'll go back into workshop. See the manager?
Yes, sir. We'll go to our second item on the workshop, which is your 2019-20 legislative agenda. We'll turn it over to Mr. President.
Thank you, Donna. So I'm passing out the 2017 agenda, of course, this is now two years old, but this is a point of reference. So as we talk about the 2019 agenda, if you want to look back at what we did previously, you'll have that opportunity. So we are a week away from the start of filing of bills. So our intent is to get some input, we use tonight, and finalize the legislative agenda for the city for 2019 and 20, and come back to you the second meeting in December, December the 17th, for approval, consideration approval of resolution and of the agenda. I want to start with this quote. This is from Governor Dan Patrick back in August of last year, in a TV interview, he said, and you can read it, but it was worth saying out loud, "People are happy with their governments at their state level, they're not with the city."
Let's disagree with that right off the bat.
He believes this, and there are others in the legislature who believe this. Now, he went on that interview, he went on that interview to say that all the problems in America are happening in cities. I don't honestly think he personally believes that, but he does believe that about some cities, and unfortunately, all cities are in the wake of that. I bring this up here to let you know, we expect 2019 to have a very hostile atmosphere in core cities. We saw it in 2017, we saw it a little bit in 2015, we think 2019 could be very hostile core cities, and we're talking about some of those items are coming up. So we're going to be very busy, all cities are going to be very busy. These are the issues that we expect to see the legislature consider and try to act on as part of their legislative agenda, and these are ones that would affect us. City revenue caps, this was brought up last time, last session, and it actually had a chance of passing, it was killed on a point of order on the last day of the special session in the House. We heard within about 20 minutes of having this passed. What we're seeing right now is the talk is a two-and-a-half percent cap on revenue from year to year, not including capital. This is just your operating budget, your MNO, or ONG, whichever way you choose. So two-and-a-half percent cap is what the governor has proposed, is what at this point Dan Patrick has said he plans to put into the Senate, although we've heard that he would actually like to go lower. We're hoping that whatever passes, if something passes, would at least be higher than that. Four, four-and-a-half percent for us does not have nearly as much impact as two-and-a-half percent would. One of our arguments has always been that more than half of our operating budget is police and fire, and if you cap revenues, it will have to impact police and fire. You can't just eliminate every park and library and communication program and just have those departments. There's actually been word coming out of the legislature in the past few weeks, we were briefed by North Texas Commission a week and a half ago, that now some legislators have responded to that by saying, "We'll just carve out police and fire and cap everything else." How you do that, I don't know. Do you suddenly have every city in the state put animal services under the police department? Because it becomes a police budget? I don't know. But that's been discussed out there, so there's already legislative resistance to the arguments the cities have used in the past. For a long time, just saying local control was a winning argument. It is not a winning argument now. So as a result, you'll see, Texas Municipal League has come out with a new approach to try and re-educate the public on the importance of city governments, as on a subsequent slide. So revenue caps, going to be one of the first bills filed, it'll probably pass through the Senate in the first week, week and a half.
Yeah, Council, there's no problem with revenue caps, and we did analysis this year. When revenues are growing and you put that cap in place, you can deal with it. It's when you have a downturn in the economy, you put a revenue cap in place, the city will never be able to dig its way out of that loss of revenue. You will forever be cutting projects and programs. It is bad for city government.
And the authors of the 2017 bill said they had no interest in a callback provision, so we would not expect to see that on the 2019 bill unless it's forced. We also have concern that we've voiced our local legislators. If you look at the response to Hurricane Harvey down in South Texas, yes, the state has taken a lot of credit for the response in the Houston area, but if you look at the video footage, nearly every vehicle you saw had a city logo from somewhere in North Texas, or Central Texas, mostly North Texas, Louisville, and Flower Mountain, McCollum, and Plano, and Arlington, and Irving, and all these cities. We had, if I remember correctly, and Chief, my memory's gone away, I think we had three fire vehicles, and we had an animal services vehicle, and we rotated, what, 14 personnel?
I think it was a little more than that.
Well, I didn't count the ones that were on the task force. So we had people and vehicles down there for multiple weeks, some in our neighboring cities. If you have revenue caps where you're only budgeting enough to barely get by, you probably don't have the extra resources available to do something like that. That concerns us. If I live on the coast, it would concern me a lot. So it's going to be a very difficult, difficult and ugly fight that we're going to see. Reduced access to state funding, this is, as you know, the state does not provide any direct funding to cities. A lot of states do, and so when they start talking about local taxes, well, they're being supplemented. Doesn't happen in Texas, there are some grant programs. There is talk amongst some legislators that, well, the cities don't really need our help, we can cut those grant programs and use that money for other things. We will be watching that and fighting that. Reduction in rollback rate, this came very close to passing last time, that anywhere from two to five percent has been talked about, and that will come up again, it'll probably be one of the first bills filed in the Senate for sure. Additional property tax exemptions, there will be some, there have been some each of the past three or four sessions at least, adding disabled veterans, adding people over 65, adding, there was one that said, it was this past time, that if a nonprofit gives a house to a qualified veteran, then they are tax exempt on that house forever. So there will be additional exemptions. It's very popular to pass tax exemptions, and they end up often winding up on the state ballot they pass every time, you'll see some. Limits on city-issued debt. We're not hearing talk about limits on the amount of debt, what we're hearing is limits on the process for issuing debt, that there'd be a higher standard for elections, that they would play with the ballot language, as they've done so far, they've tried multiple times. There's talk about moving all debt elections to November to try and get more participation, more partisan participation, but there will be discussions about city-issued debt limits. There was actually talk last session about eliminating COs, or making COs voter-approved. So, and those are, of course, the one form of general fund debt that is not, not general fund, operations debt that can, is the one that's not voter-approved, and there's talk about changing that. Limits annexation ability, this one fits very close to home, because we're just a few years away potentially from having a major annexation. There was a bill that passed in 2017 that did not, as best we can tell, affect our ability to annex under the spot, but there was talk about it. There was a bill filed that would have eliminated that ability, and we'd have had to go through the regular process, even though we've had this agreement in place for so very long. So there will be more attempts to limit annexation ability. Those will mostly come out of the San Antonio and Houston areas. Legislators there are very angry with their large cities for annexations they have done. They're accused of annexing very large tracts of property just for tax purposes and then not providing any services for extended period of time. So we're going to be watching that to see, make sure it doesn't affect our ability to annex Castle Hills when that time comes. Lowered appraisal caps, that was discussed, there were bills filed last time, the bills didn't get very far. This is probably, of all these, the one that, in talking with Burt, talking with our other cities, we think that's the lowest threat right there, because if you lower the appraisal caps, that affects school taxes, and if school taxes are lowered, the state is supposed to make up the difference, and the state has not shown a desire to make up the difference. Which is why the revenue caps are cities and counties and college districts, not school districts. They are exempt from that. And that is why appraisal caps probably are not as strong of a threat, because it would affect schools. Changes to appraisal and appeals process, there's going to be changes, I'm sure the mayor's heard some of these floating around out there. There were proposals last time, change the makeup of the board, how the board is selected, there are changes on how appeals are handled, and who can do appeals, and how long they take, and who can do this, and who can do that. Even though we are not directly in the business of appraisals and appeals, it's something that could affect us. So we're going to keep an eye on that one, but be sure there will be multiple bills filed on that topic. And then reduce local rulemaking authority. I think only the Galarian example from 2017 was the small cells bill, that even though every city in the state said, "Wait a minute, you're jumping way too fast to trying to accommodate a technology that's coming anyway, and you're going to really put us in a bad situation on protecting our rights away," it still passed, and passed pretty handy. So there will be additional efforts made, where there are certain authorities the city has currently, that the legislature is going to want to limit or eliminate, and move those to the state level. So all of these, we expect, remember, cities, all the problems in America are in our cities, so we expect all of these to come at us because of that perception. We aren't alone in this. Our best ally has always been Texas Municipal League. TML's a very effective organization down in Austin, but their effectiveness has been challenged the past couple of sessions, again, because the idea of local control is no longer a winning argument for a lot of legislators. So they come out with a program called Our Home, Our Decisions. No, it says nothing about local control, it just says, "Where I live, I should be able to make my own choices." Very Texan attitude. It fits in very nicely with our guiding principle, you'll see in the legislative agenda for 2017, that the level of government most connected to the people that are being governed is local, because our residents can see all of you in the grocery store, or at the school drop-off line, or at a football game, or at a church, they're very unlikely to see, they're state legislators very often, they will never probably see their governor and their state senators and their elected officials from the state level. So we believe that local decisions should stay local. And so we are going to be supporting this as a statewide effort. Cities across the state are being encouraged to use this, we're going to be rolling ours out sometime in the next few weeks, we're still working on details, but before the legislative session starts, we'll be seeing this. North Texas Commission is going to be much more active in legislation this year than they have been the past several sessions. They have a new president down there, who came over from Texas Association of Business, and before that, from the Irving Chamber. And they are really driving some coordinated efforts among the regional chambers. There's, I believe, eight, maybe nine, chambers in North Texas that have some sort of lobbying effort. And North Texas Commission is going to coordinate all those. In fact, certain chambers are taking the lead on certain issues, and those are feeding information in. Dallas Regional Chamber of Commerce is leading the regional effort on school finance, as an example. And the, I should remember, there's another chamber we talked about that is leading the effort on public information-related economic development. There was a bill filed last time that failed, but it's going to be filed again, that would make economic development negotiations subject to public records during the negotiation process. So you have a, we just opened Mary Kay, they had their opening last week. Imagine if the entire negotiation had been open to the public. And if other states don't do it and Texas does it, we think that'd have a very detrimental effect. So North Texas Commission's going to be much more active, in particular on school finance revenue caps and ED topics, and he saw revenue caps a lot. They see that as a threat. In fact, I'll tie it into Texas In fact, I'll, I'll tie it into Texas Association of Business, that's where the gentleman was previously. They have been active on some issues, like last session, they were very instrumental in killing the bathroom bill. We did not take a position on that as a city, but TAB opposed it and fought that. They stayed neutral on revenue caps. And what happened in that previous session, they decided to focus on what directly affected them, but they had a couple of board members who run major companies in the Houston area that did an analysis on how much they would save under a revenue cap, compared to how much it would cost them in terms of services that their residents, their employees receive from cities. And they determined it was a net loss. For their large businesses, it was a net loss, they wouldn't save enough money to make up for what they would be giving up. So, those two board members tried to get TAB to actively oppose revenue caps. The board ultimately voted to stay neutral. So, we think they'll do, either stay neutral this time, or actively oppose, but they will be a, an ally for us on some of the items. So, the ED negotiations becoming a public negotiation, they opposed that. So, we have some allies out there, and right now, they've got, they've got some pull down in Austin. The most important ally we've got is our residents, our businesses. You might recall during the 2017 legislative session, we became a lot more vocal. We put the mayor out there, and his voice was out there on quite a few issues. Some of you went down and testified in Austin at hearings, and spoke locally, and did some written commentary. We sent department directors, police chief, fire chief went down there. The more we can educate our residents on the importance of what we do, and the negative impact of what some of these bills would have on Lewisville, on their city, on their neighborhoods, the better off we are. Because right now, as I said, city, city influence in Austin is, is waning. It's not what it used to be. But if enough of these people reach out, they can get something done. So, we're going to be taking our positions directly to the public again this time, probably even more so than we did in 2017. That's how we have the opportunity of influencing legislation, is by, by educating our residents and convincing them that we're right on some of these issues. So, 2017 agenda, we had, upfront, we had the item we were going to actively work for, and that, there's three areas we're going to try and pursue legislation, we'll see in the next slide, we only actually ended up pursuing one, and we got passage of that. In the next two pages, I'm missing a page in this one, so we're going to get rid of that. The next two pages show our 10 critical issues. These are the 10 issues that city council identified as the most important legislative issues to watch, both at the state and federal level during the 17, 18 cycle. There's more description on these pages of what they mean, but this is the list here. Phase two funding for I-35E, tried to get that funding, didn't happen, but we're going to keep that, you know, we, we tried to convince people to look at it. Maintaining the ability to annex under the SPA, local revenue caps, keeping water rate authority at the local level, there was an effort last session by the PUC to move that to the state level, that they would have final approval of water rates. Didn't get very far, thankfully. Maintaining the ability to maintain our, our rights of way, control our rights of way, that was the small sales bill, was, did not win, but some of the others did. Revenue redirection, that is revenue from the cities going to the state. I'm trying to remember the number, it's $180 million, I think, that the comptroller's office receives from cities in processing sales tax, which is about three times their annual budget. So, that goes into the general fund for the state. Traffic tickets, Judge Holman can tell you some numbers on that, but traffic tickets, the first money goes to the state. In many ways, cities are used as a revenue generating source for the state. So, we want to watch, and we identified last time, we wanted to watch and make sure that there were not efforts by the legislature to take money the city already was receiving, and shift it to the state to cover their budget issues. So, that's one. Land use, that's maintaining the city's ability to control how land is used within the city boundaries. And there were efforts to reduce that authority. Online sales tax, of course, we had the, the Wayfair decision out of the Supreme Court for, was it North Dakota, I think, one of the Dakotas? North Dakota, that essentially said, under certain circumstances, that online, that online purchases are subject to sales tax. Now, if you look at what you're making purchases on, a lot of your purchases, you're already paying sales tax. Texas is so big, many of these businesses have a physical presence in the state. Physical presence means sales tax subject. There's an estimate that this, the Wayfair decision could be about a 3% bump in sales tax for the state. But there was an effort, actually federal in this case, to eliminate online sales taxes. So, we, we talked to multiple times with Representative Burgess about that topic. Water reuse, it's one you, Mike Rivers, Steve Mack is talking to you about several times. The idea that we are taking in water, retrieving the used water to a really high standard of cleanliness, and then throwing it in the river, and it goes on down the river, and we're pumping in new water. So, what we're looking for here, as you'll see in the agenda, is at least the state should research whether water reuse is a viable option, and what's, what's reasonable, what's fair. And then, mass transit, with DCTA in town, obviously, we have a stake in that conversation. And the idea that there's only so many roads you can build, and only so many cars you can put on those roads, mass transit could be a solution. So, we had on our list of 10 critical issues last time, support for state funding of, or at least state accommodations for mass transit. Both are our critical issues, we will come back to this list at the very end. 2017, we had some successes. One of them is, we got Lewisville added to the list of cities that are eligible for a rebate of state sales, hotel, and alcoholic beverage tax on certain qualified hotel convention center projects. So, we got added to that list, about 13, 14 cities added to the list, and we were one of them. We did preserve the city's ability to annex Castle Hills under the existing SPA. We were talking to Representative Simmons' office almost every day the last week in the special session. And he, his office did call at one point and said, "Okay, want to make sure." So, we appreciate the help that his office provided. Maintain that, that for us is a big victory. And then, Lewisville officials testified in multiple hearings, we talked about it earlier, against bills that would harm city operations. And only one of the bills we testified against passed. That was, passed as it was drafted, and that was the small sales bill. I thought I had on here, but I didn't. Oh, that was the last session, never mind, the fire control, that was the one before. So, here's when we start, November 12th. We're a little more than a week away, or right out a week away, from the start of pre-filing. Now, pre-filing, there's a lot of legislators already have bills in their pockets, ready to file them, they like to file them nice and early, especially if it's a topic, there's going to be a lot of filings, they want to be the first one out of the gate, so that their bill gets early attention, and they can start rallying support. Both houses will hold the first roughly 10, 10 numbers in their slots for the speaker and for the lieutenant governor. So, Senate Bill 1, Senate Bill 2, Senate Bill 3, those will not be filed right away unless they are the ones the lieutenant governor has pushed through. He doesn't file them himself, he has other senators file them. So, when you look at the numbering of Senate bills and House bills, the first roughly 10 in each house are the ones that are coming from leadership of those houses. And often, those are the ones that move through. Last session, in the regular session 2017, the first eight Senate bills that were filed, all were passed by the senate in less than a week and a half. None of them successfully passed the House without major changes. And the first eight House bills, most of them, I think six of the eight passed in the first three and a half weeks, four weeks, and none of those passed the senate. So, we have a nice bicameral system. Session opens January 8th, last day for bill filing, March 8th, and then the session closes May 27th. If there's a special session again, it just fills in after that. So, the, the work begins next week, actually, it's going on, but the actual filing begins next week. So, here's objectives that we, we know we want to have in 2019. These are ones that Council was aware of, that we've discussed previously. One of them is to amend language in the, in state law to allow us to call an election in Castle Hills to expand the boundaries of the crime control and prevention district. You might remember in 2015, we tried to do both the fire district and the police district. The fire district language got adopted correctly. They may change on the police district, but not the language that we had requested. So, right now, it allows us to add an election for property that's inside our boundaries, but not our ETJ. Fire district allowed ETJ election, we held that election, and it passed. So, now we want to go back and, and try and change the law to allow the same election on the police side, on the crime control, partly to equalize sales taxes prior to annexation, and also to help fund the public safety services in Castle Hills that are becoming costly. The next one is to consider proposed workers' compensation changes for police and fire personnel. This is firefighter Allison, is the example here. And there are some changes that we just think need to be, you know, looked at. Texas Fire Chiefs Association, at this point, is going to be heading that. We're not going to commit until we see the actual bill that is filed, but the concept is one that, that we think deserves, has some merit. And then, the third one here, again, preserve that annexation ability under the SPA. If we can get through this session, and that has not changed, then that will be a victory. And then finally, preserve local rulemaking authority. Again, we believe that city government is most closely connected to city residents, and that a one-size-fits-all rule for all cities doesn't make sense. We, Lewisville and Van Horn and Houston are very different cities with very different needs, and one rule for all three probably doesn't work in many cases. Some possible objectives, there's three items we want to put out there for you, to see if you want us to pursue these or not. The first one is to make some changes in state law about the composition of the DCTA Board of Directors. Currently, the board, we have a Lewis representative, well, Mr. Emery was here earlier.
He left earlier.
He left earlier. So, Mr. Emery's our representative, the cities that are doing sales tax collections have representatives, the county has representative, so do other cities around the county that are not participants in DCTA. So, cities that have chosen not to be a member are on the board deciding how money is spent, and what, and making decisions for the cities that are paying into it.
So, Council, this is coming from discussion that the three cities have had. Obviously, Lewisville, Denton, and Highland Village, the three contributing cities. If you look at the board makeup, it really is reflective of what really was originally designed in the statute, as kind of a preliminary board, that was established prior to the vote being taken in each one of the cities related to the sales tax, and that was never changed. So, as you know, in 2017, the city of Lewisville contributed $13 million to DCTA, Denton about $12 million, and Highland Village about $1.2 million. We think it's time that the board be changed into the only, those cities that actually are contributing members. You might have some kind of advisory task force with the other cities, but we think it would also be composed, include Denton County representatives, and they would represent those cities that aren't contributing from a golly perspective. So, the three cities have discussed this, and we will likely be hiring a council to help us develop this legislation.
A second change that, that we would like to see in there is currently, you cannot afford, appoint a city council member to represent Lewisville. We think that at least should be an option, that you could appoint a council member. DART allows that, in fact, most of the representatives on DART are elected officials.
No, just one.
Just one?
Just one, the mayor of Irving, yeah, the mayor of Irving.
Most of it's former. Are they planning on, planning commissions?
I recognize the names.
That's correct.
So, in that case, they have the option, but they've chosen not to. You don't have the option, Denton doesn't have the option, Highland Village doesn't have the option. So, Mayor, we can, we got three of these potential objectives, we want to get input. I can run through all three of them, or if you wanted to pause and, and offer some input on this one, I can.
Does anybody have any questions? Well, we, we sort of talked about this in the past, but not into this much detail, and not with Highland Village and Flower Mountain. Highland Village and Denton. Sorry about that. Flower Mountain wouldn't be involved in that. Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I find the notion of representation without taxation interesting.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, very interesting.
The weight of the board is nine members that don't contribute, and three members that do. Wasn't that it?
That's correct.
Quite frankly, if they want to be on the board, this gives them an opportunity.
Yes.
And it's it.
They can, uh...
Right now, right now, there's not as much incentive.
Right. I agree, it makes sense to me.
There's a number of other changes that we've discussed with the three cities, and some of those can actually be enacted just through internal orders. It doesn't require statutory change. So, these are the ones that require statutory change.
I'm hearing support for including this in our priorities for the year.
Absolutely, yes.
So, the second one, I mentioned earlier that we got added to the list of cities that are eligible for the state rebate on a qualifying project. We submitted a qualifying project back in May or June?
May.
May, hoping to hear by July. It is now November, we have not heard. There are several other cities that also applied way back then, and also have not heard. The deadline is in January. So, we proposing that we explore the possibility of seeking some kind of legislative extension for cities that met that deadline, and did everything they were told to do, but now not hearing anything back, and by the time we hear something back, it could well be too late to make revisions or make a new submission. So...
This is one of the most frustrating issues. And we have put in so much time and effort, and we did this in good faith, based on what they did in Austin related to this legislation, and now it is just sitting in the comptroller's office.
Because they know that it's going to time it.
That's right, along with every other city that submitted a proposal.
Yeah, I think on Lewisville, all the cities that have submitted, as far as we know, are waiting for answers. Which, one could argue that, that is contrary to the legislative intent, that would be our argument, that the legislative intent was to encourage development, and the actual application has been to not encourage that.
In fact, we talked to Representative Simmons and Senator Nelson, and both were very supportive of our proposal. So, we think that the no action is not in step with the legislative intent.
Are there other cities, the other cities that you mentioned, are they actually going to be helping push this forward too? Because...
That's really a good question. We probably need to reach out to those other cities and form a group that would be in...
I think that would get you more.
So, I'm hearing a general support for this concept. The last one would involve a statewide change, and this is attempting to amend state law to give the city council authority to call a local optional election of your own authority. Currently, it requires a petition campaign. The petition is a very lengthy process, and very high standards. If I remember correctly, to have a November 2019 election, you have to start the process in April. And it can be very costly. The local optional election that was held here previously was funded by a couple of legislators, Total Wine &amp; Moors was a big one, they had some help from others, and it cost $30,000 or more just to collect the signatures. Once it got on the ballot, it passed by a wide margin. And looking around the state, when, when local option elections are going to the voters, in most cases, they're passing. But city councils don't have the authority to call that. It's very rare to have an election that you cannot call. You cannot call a council member rollback election, and you cannot call a, a, pardon me, a council member recall, or a property tax rollback. And those probably make sense, this one potentially doesn't. So, just to give an example of how that affects Lewisville, one example, Old Town Brewery does not have the permit it needs to do what the owner wants to do in that location, which is a brew pub with various activities and services. And the way our local option status is in Lewisville, he can't do that. But if you decided, "Hey, we should allow that," you can't, unless he and others go out and do the petition drive.
So, it's very limiting to us, if we want to attract additional breweries to Old Town, they're probably not going to come, because, I don't, you got it breweries, but I understand a big deal is you go in, and you get a growler, and you leave with the growler filled with beer. And that's not allowable in Lewisville. So, that would be our major reason for the change.
Our argument there would be, you know, leave the will to the voters, that ultimately the voters get to decide up or down, it just takes out the procedural steps, the administrative steps. This would be a statewide change, while the others are more localized, which makes it harder, and we're not sure if we have a legislator who would be willing to take this forward. We haven't actually discussed that with them yet, pending whether Council even has the interest dipping its toe into what could be turbulent waters.
You know who else is running to, you know, with desire to do this?
We've just had the one pre-brewery that's located in Old Town.
No, I mean statewide.
Oh, statewide, no.
My, my take on this is it's really more the manufacturers that are bumping into this, and it's an issue for them versus the cities, because it's only, it's only coming to us when there's a manufacturer who wants to get that particular type of permit.
That's correct.
Well, it's also a product, I mean, if you look at the, how we, we're set up now, it's a product of who brought in the most recent change, they brought in what they wanted.
That's right.
They can bring in a broader scope, because they needed or want, and they didn't want And they didn't want to risk getting, not getting signatures on the petition because they took a, you know, a domain they didn't.
That's correct.
Need to benefit from, so.
That is.
And that's the problem. And, and then, you know, the whole collection process is very complex. And the timeline to get all the signatures from start to finish is narrow. And it's quite a, it's quite an accomplishment to get one.
The interesting thing too, Castle Hills, when they had their election, they actually do have that provision. So, if you look at the brew pub that's located in Castle Hills, they can have growers.
So, will they lose that when they get annexed?
No. I don't think so, because that was a justice of the peace. They're, they're going to be grandfathered wherever they're at. So, like, if, but if we had a higher. Let's say if we allowed it here and they didn't allow it there, they wouldn't get to do it. They would have to have their own election. We'd have to have an election.
When we annex them, does that mean we will get that?
Because that election was held along Justice of the Peace boundaries, correct? Yes. Because we're in two counties. That's what drove that. There's a lot of complexities.
I, I wouldn't have an issue with it, but I think, I think the microbrew community has better legislative take on this. It may be one of those things where we could support them.
Probably with a lot, certainly the brewer that's located in Louisville is the funding issue.
Yeah, you would, no, you would need to go with, with Community Brewing. They've got a pretty vocal group down. Their, their owner is very connected into, into the state ledge. Pedicolos, I think, is pretty well-connected as well. So, those might be a couple of the breweries to, to talk to and see what, what a better, would it be better coming straight from the cities with their support? Or would it be better for them to push it with the city supporting it? And I don't know.
Yeah, I think that might be better. Because we already got two issues. One, we know it's going to be hard. This one, as I'm looking at it, I mean, the time and effort that it's going to take with the environment that's going on in Austin, I don't think this one is going to win for us. I think if we go, if we come behind and support some businesses, maybe we'll have a shot, a better shot than, than the city. Because they're already trying to push away control. And this just seems like another argument to, to kind of hit us over the head. So, wow, it's not a good, I don't think it's a win for us. I think we, we keep behind the brewers. Say, hey, we support this, and connect the Old Town Brewery to them and let them do it with support.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that there is legislation introduced that achieves this change, that you would be in support of it. You just don't want us to initiate that.
Yeah, I don't think we can carry the water on that one.
Okay, that makes sense.
We'll just add it under our support. Where we want to, we can carry it.
It'd be one of the four ingredients.
Which leads us to this last item. Now, we're going to change the way we print our legislative agenda. This is a very nice, pretty booklet, nice pictures, a whole lot of content. But I just, I can almost guarantee you, none of our legislators read everything. They probably assume they know most of it, since a lot of it's from TML. So, North Texas Commission actually did a very nice job. It's a one-page, two-sided sheet that has about five issues on one side, five on the other. Five for state, five for federal. And we're going to try and replicate some of that and bring it down to either a one-page, two-sided or a, you know, four-page, two-sheet, which means a lot of the content you see in here, where it talks about all of our detail on local authority and local revenue and parks funding and so forth, would still be attached to the resolution we're going to bring to you. But they wouldn't be in our printed material. Our printed material, because I assure you, our legislators know where we stand on revenue gaps. They know where we stand on those, those topics. So, the printed material would focus on the initiatives that we want to put out would be on, on one section. Here's what we are actively going to work for is these, I guess it comes down to five items. And then on the flip side, the inverse, would be our critical issues. Here's the issues that are most important to the city of Louisville as we go forward. Last year, we had 10. We don't have to have 10. It could be one, it could be 10. I would suggest not going above 12. 10's a nice round number. I want to get input from you as to what topics you would like to see in there. Just a reminder, that's what's in our list for 2017, in case you want to use that as a starting point. And so, I'll throw it open to the group to see what topics you believe are, are critical issues in 1920. First one on the list.
I would say revenue caps is number one. And annexation, because that's still, because we don't know where to go with that. The rest of it kind of falls, mass transit maybe third, but just on my list. One, two, three guy, keep it something.
Is there anything that you would take off from this list?
Is online sales tax still an issue? There's a potential issue in terms of how the state collects it. And there's a couple of different ways that are being looked at. The comptroller hasn't yet actually said what they're going to propose when they do the legislation. Because the legislature will have to pass bills that say how it's collected. Whether it's a destination-based, which is more precise, or whether it's a, they do an average and apply that average to all sales, which is easier on the retailer's side. So, there could be some issue there if the comptroller says essentially, we're going to collect the state park, we're going to wait on the city park, if the cities tell us what they want and which one they prefer. Which would be having, you know, a thousand cities all trying to make a decision, and that could take a while. And we might then miss our window because it really needs to be in this 19 legislative session. We don't want to wait till 21 when they won't care anymore because they've got their revenue. So, there could be some issues related to it. And it could still be a federal issue if Congress decides they want to come in and do something to change the landscape, even with the Supreme Court ruling in place. The Supreme Court ruling didn't say all online purchases are subject to sales tax no matter what. It had certain parameters in it, based on how it was being collected or assessed.
Yeah, I think federally, they're going to be pushed away from that. There's plenty of other stuff on there. They're not going to pass a ban, that's going to kill them at home.
At the very least, it is less of a priority than it was before because of the Wayfair decision.
What if they don't do away with the online sales tax? But the state comes in and says, we're going to take all of it, like they did with automobile taxes. Which, that's what they're moving to a lot of other stuff.
That'd be really bad, Mayor.
That would be a bad thing.
That'd be really, really bad.
That would hit us on two things.
Because they would cap our ability to set our taxes. And then they would take away a third of our revenues that support our.
But they'd be happy. There is a three-legged stool that concerns cities greatly. One, that, that three things will happen. Revenue stream will be cut down, that authority to act will be reduced, and that we will be given additional responsibilities, additional things the state doesn't really want to pay for. So, we'll have less money to spend. We're told to do more with it. Oh, and by the way, the state's going to keep its share. So, that's the three-legged stool that would be there. And what you're saying would be.
And that also goes right into the revenue redirection. Instead of paying it out, they just keep it. Like they did on the school funding. It's assumed to be their money when they get it, even if it comes from the schools. And if it comes from the cities on court fees and all that, it's state money then. It's amazing how they can collect without even much, much of an effort.
And sometimes charges a fee for it.
Different directions, so if you're trying to keep the list of 10.
Okay, so.
The least important part to be on the list is water reuse. And I recognize, go further down. Thank you. And I recognize the revenue value of it. But as far as, you know, picking my mountains, this, this will fall off my list to make room for, for some other things.
And, and land use, while that's, I think, critical and one of our core functions, how, how reasonable is that they're going to come in and?
Take it all away? No, chip away at it. They've been trying that. But take it all away would be extremely unlikely.
So, basically, what I'm hearing is that we would take off water reuse. We would perhaps keep online sales tax, but lower on the list.
Scale it back.
Scale it back, and land use.
Again, same thing, keep it on the pulse.
And everything else would stay.
And we'll still have issues on the full agenda that'll be, so we can take positions. And the advantage of this, as we've discussed before, is when council adopts a resolution, it says, this is what we stand for, and we authorize the mayor, the manager, or their designees to speak on our behalf. So, when we see something come along that, I'll just pick randomly, you know, protect state grants for parks. And actually, one I was talking to Stacy about just this week. If the state comes along and has a bill that would eliminate those grants, then we would have the authority under the agenda to act on that. We only had to come to you, I think, once last year for an item that wasn't in the agenda.
One other question on rights of way, have we already been taken to the cleaners? And that's, you know.
The cable, the Texas Cable Association is very active legislatively. They had a very, very quiet 2017. I think they were trying to stay out of the way and let small cells go through. Small cells took away some authority for that, that we still have on the cable side and the telecommunications side. I would be very surprised if they did not have bills already drafted to try and take some of that additional authority away on their end. And in the process, potentially reduce the revenue stream. I think there'll be an attack on pay fees to.
Well, that's a hot item.
Is that something TML is, is addressing?
Active.
Yes. The Resolutions Committee, it was, it was one of the topics in the Resolutions Committee.
The phase two funding, that's like how many years, how many decades before they actually start raising money for that?
It could be.
It's important.
Two years. If they could do it.
So, so we know that come to us, and we believe we're going to get funding related to the main street bridge and corporate bridge, which are, is big. But everything else in between, we don't know. We have, there's no, there's no date. So, I think it needs to stay on the list.
No, I'm not trying to take it off. I'm just, and, and when I'm, when you're trying to sell something, you leave with your best thing first. I think you talk about it, but I don't think that's what we need off of it.
Yeah, I think anything says something about revenue caps would be on top too. The rest I can.
You can go in, yeah.
I need, I need, I need Castle Hills and I need control of my budget.
We'll bring this one down exactly where we're bringing it down a little bit. This one, we were going to eliminate.
Yep, just keep it on. It won't be on the hot list.
So, italicize that. Land use, not going to be on the list. These is with eight. And I heard online sales tax would drop a bit, so move that up and move online sales tax up. Only drops one spot because we took two off.
I would recommend you put rights of way above water rates.
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's.
We're hopeful that the water rates issue is dead. It got very little traction in 2017, and we've not heard any discussion. Didn't show up during any of the interim committee discussions, which it did last time. In the interim committee, it was when it came up. So, we're hoping that the water rates issue is no longer in play. Of course, as soon as we get comfortable with that, we'll throw it out there.
Right.
So, we're going to watch it no matter what, whether you keep it on this list or not. We're going to watch it. Are there other changes we'd like to make here? Moving up, moving down? Water rates may be down more.
Maybe flip revenue redirection in phase two.
I heard, switch that one up there.
Good to me.
It sounds not good with it, but if you don't start looking at transportation, you're going to choke yourself to death.
Oh, you mean in terms of this number, this being high?
Yeah, they both, they both choke you to death. The question is which way? So, I'd go one way or the other.
From our perspective, as we're going out there, we're going to treat them all of equal importance. This is a question of when you list them, which one the reader will see first.
Do we want to keep mass transit and phase two funding for I-35 on there? Either kind of one of the same.
Have that argument.
Transportation?
Yeah, really, the focus for us is I-35 funding, right?
Well, the mass transit issue, that's getting somebody having the option to put a council member on it.
Well, that's the DCTA. That's really kind of separate than I think.
Yeah, we're having, that is a, that's an initiative. We're definitely going to try and get that done.
I don't see any major issues for us with mass transit.
So, take that way.
That's a reasonable problem.
We still support the RTC initiatives in that regard. So, I've got seven. These seven right here.
And I just wanted to thought, I know they're not prioritized, but they, there's implication that they are. Online sales tax needs more important than the water rates. I think the water rates is so complicated. If they can do that, that's going to be a miracle.
I agree.
We could just monitor water rates and not have it as a critical issue, but keep it on our list and hopefully watch.
Keep the pulse.
So, continue to monitor and take it off critical list.
Basically, you get it on one page. So, I'm seeing six. And online sales tax, as I am hearing the group, that's not necessarily just saying to the feds, leave it alone. It's also saying to the state, don't cut us out. Fund us fairly.
Right.
Okay. So, it's both of those.
And then you can charge us back for the accounting.
They will. I was amazed to hear those numbers that they give. Three times your annual budget is paid to them by cities. I want that deal.
I know.
So, these six? If so, I'm done. Unless there's any other questions I can answer. Again, next week, next Monday is when pre-filing starts, and we will start tracking bills, and we will start building our database. They won't schedule hearings and committees for a long time. We got the, the pre-filing. I understand that a lot of the pre-filed are the most ideologically pure bills. The ones that are the farthest on either extreme of political spectrum tend to get filed early. And so, they get a whole lot of attention. So, don't panic the first week when every bill you see is just the most horrible thing you ever saw. First off, there will be worse ones. But other than the 1 through 10 on each side, a lot of those early filings don't get very far because they are so ideologically extreme. Don't get too scared. Nervous, but not scared.
It's going to be a very painful session, and we all are very, very aware of it.
I asked for a sabbatical from January through May, but that was not approved.
So, James does plan to use TML's campaign?
Yes.
We might talk about that, James, a little bit.
We're working on the details. They, they provided a video. We like the video. We want to localize it a little bit. So, we're working on an intro to the video. But essentially, what it, it does is an education package. It's graphic displays, it's written materials, and they're going to add to it throughout the year. The idea being tie a lot of these actions, both in support and opposition, back to the idea, our home, our decisions. The idea being, let me give you an example. Van Horn, Texas, out in West Texas, very different from Louisville. Out in, if you have been to Van Horn, it is literally in the middle of nowhere. You will miss it if you aren't watching for it. Lot of cattle in Van Horn. And a lot of the cattlemen in Van Horn realized that their cows were getting sick and it's sometimes dying from eating plastic bags. So, Van Horn, pretty much as red of a town as you're going to find, passed a plastic band bag. Plastic bag ban. So close.
We understood.
So did Austin. Austin did it for environmental purposes. So, Austin and Van Horn, totally different cities, both passed the same item. The legislature didn't like it. Legislature tried to do action in the last session that would void both of those, didn't get it passed, but a court later overturned it based on the state law about containers. But if the state had put in a rule that applies to both of those cities, they have very different needs. Van Horn, they have cattlemen, and they know what they need to protect their cattle. Austin is a very environmentally friendly, green-type city, and they know what their residents want. We believe that those cities should be allowed to make decisions so long as they don't violate state precepts, state constitution, state law, or federal, constitution, federal law. We believe Louisville should be allowed to make its decisions. Not everybody in the community is going to agree to every decision that's made, but they have a process to follow, and it's worked really well under the charter since 1963. And as, as a general rule city since 1925, it's worked extremely well. We don't see the need to scrap that and say, please, state of Texas, tell us how to run our business. That's what the TML education campaign is going out and saying to people in probably much, maybe nicer terms, and I'm, maybe more blunt than they would be. But the message they're trying to get out there is, look, your city has done a lot of good things for you. If there's something you don't like, there's a process for it. But you really don't want to take all that authority and give it to some people sitting in an office in Austin who've never been to your city and don't know what you want, don't know what you need. That's, that's our argument for local, local authority. So, you will be seeing materials come out. I was hoping to be before Thanksgiving. Honestly, I don't know that it will. That's another project that have kind of taken precedent on that. But by the end of this calendar year, we will be rolling out our version of the video. We'll be rolling out some materials. You'll be seeing reference to it, we expect, in the December issue of the printed Horizon. So, you'll be seeing those things come out. It's our home, our decisions. And that's, you'll be seeing it for a lot of cities. Hopefully, all of them, but realistically, just a lot. I know that many of the cities involved in our coalition around here are working on it as well.
Port Aransas did a similar thing, but it was for the fishing and tourism.
Yes.
Plastic bags.
That's right. That's right, the plastic bags. And they, there was the fishing of the turtles.[1701.04]